Welcome everyone to the board meeting of the Santa Barbara County Board of Education. This is our regular meeting, August 8th, and I hereby call it order. We are going to continue with the live Spanish presentation of the board meeting for those viewing online. And now we will turn to Mr. Porter for our pledge of allegiance.
I would ask you to stand please and maybe take a minute and let's reflect on a new school year. Whether we're board members or administrators or teachers or just people who love kids. You know, I would say that I think I am, and I think probably everybody else is just incredibly honored to be of service to them and to be able to watch them grow. And let's just appreciate that privilege that we have with all of us. But please join.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Porter. And roll call.
Okay, Mrs. Alvarez Flores here.
Mrs. Cardy here.
Mrs. DeWort here.
Mrs. Erman.
Mrs. Frost here.
Mr. Howell.
Here.
Mr. Porter.
And present.
Thank you.
We do have some changes to the agenda today. Being mindful of the fact that we have a speaker today and also a public hearing that are both at times certain. We're going to move some pieces around here and I'll give you a brief view of what it is right now and then of course, as we go on, you'll find out. After the public comments section and then we'll go to action item number eight. And then after that, we will go into the closed session. After the closed session, after number nine is when we're going to make the change and we're going to go to our speaker and her presentation and then go ahead with the public hearing and the subsequent item that we need to do after the public hearing. And then depending upon whether we finished our discussion of item nine, we have a couple of options for how we will proceed at that point. But I'll save that till later as it gets kind of convoluted here for a minute. So, um, right now though, we're going to move right into precedent and comments and Mr. Porter, you stole my thunder.
Back to school.
Back to school. I saw my neighbor yesterday and she was saying, I'm gonna party a little bit tonight. I may have a headache in the morning, but it's back to school. So she was getting ready, but I know that we have some staff members that are out at school sites today with their staff getting ready for the start of school. And I think Sunny is actually starting classes today? Oh my goodness, they're at it already. So, uh, starting with Michelle, any board comments today?
Just a reminder about the CSBA conference for county board members. I think the dates are September 13th, I believe. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody?
Mine is just a comment of congratulations to both Santa Barbara Unified and Santa Barbara High School for putting out two exemplary young women who have graduated or moving on in the world. So all our best to both of you and to them.
Mr. Porter. And?
I was able to be at the new teacher's opening day and thereafter until 3:30 last night. But we have a hundred new hires and
Oh my.
Still needing more and bright, bright shiny faces. At least eight of them are residents, so they have a four, a guaranteed four-year employment span right there because we've taken and entered into the residency program. This go around, we have 16 candidates that we will be doing student teaching with and sending them out the door. We need them now, so the sooner the better. So wonderful to see those new faces. Oh gosh.
Were we ever that young?
Recall. Yeah. All right.
On one foot. Thank you. And Nadra?
Um, so with the theme of going back to school, I'm going to just do one little comment about the summer. Um, closing out the summer, I had an opportunity to attend a combined coffee and community and beautiful Galita um, at Berkeley Park on July 20th. Um, right behind Kellogg Elementary, which um, is especially close to my heart because that's where my daughter attended from K through six. And um, these events are always great, community building events. But um, one of the highlights of this one was that um, the mayor, Paula Perotti and Mayor Protemp uh, Luis Reyes Martin um, honored the Kellogg Ocean um, Guardians. And so the Kellogg Ocean Guardians, just as a overview, they are a group of elementary school students that mobilized Kellogg to replace all of their plastic utensils with reusable metal utensils. And it's the first school and the Delita Unified School District to do this and one of the first schools in the state to initiate this program. So it was just really heartwarming to see them being recognized by the local leaders and by the community and them being such young leaders. And and um, yeah, but just taking this initiative to be examples in the community. And I just wanted to highlight that and bring a nice bow to the end of summer. So that's all my comments.
And Mr. Powell. And do we have any public comments today?
No.
Public? Okay. Then we will move into the action item number eight. And the the point of item number eight is in order for us to proceed to the discussion in closed session of item number nine. So what I want is for, to bring forward to the board is to appoint Dr. Salsedo and Stephen Torres as our real property negotiators for the closed session item. Otherwise, we can't proceed with that. So um, are there, is, I still need a motion.
I'll move to approve Dr. Salsedo and Steve Torres as our real property negotiators.
And a second.
My second.
All right, discussion. Call for the question. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And now we are going to have a slight pause while we transition into closed session for item number nine. Reconvening to open session and we are skipping ahead to item number 20, a presentation by Lompoc Unified School District's local partnership. Uh, and I'll let Susan take it.
Great. Thank you so much. Well, we have a wonderful guest who just entered the room. Some of you may know her personally, Dr. Sally Kingston, or some of you may have heard her name before. Um, she's relatively new to Lompoc Unified School District as a Director of Communications and Engagement since April of 2024, but not new to education at all. Um, some of you may remember her as being the Harding Principal, the highly esteemed Harding Principal for seven years. And um, then went to Carpinteria, serving at the district office and in multiple other capacities, um, executive directors, all in education, research and analysis and data as well. So connecting Sally here to Mary Beth Cardy, who months ago had said, you know, it would be so great. I'm so curious how things are going in Lompoc Unified specifically to the Dangermond Preserve, which will be Sally will share about today and a couple other key teen centers in the, in the Lompoc area. So with that, please help me welcome Sally Kingston.
I do have a logistical question. Is someone moving my slides for me or do I have a? I think you have a, but there you go. Okay. I just want a little instruction.
Yes. The green button. Yes. You never know.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, evening, and thank you for having me. It's really refreshing to be back in K-12. I spent the last 10 years working remotely at various levels and really missed having the impact and um, loved working in Carpinteria. I think Mary Beth knows that. And I'm excited to share about Lompoc. Lompoc has a lot of feel like Carpinteria. It's a small district with a lot of very connected folks over time. So I'm thrilled to be there. I'm actually just moved there and I'm very happy to be a part of that community. So I'm going to share a few key updates. First, I want to say thank you for the partnership with you all in the county education office. In the last four months, I have grown in my awareness of the many, many more programs that are offered since 2012, when I left Carpinteria. The world has changed. I just wanted to highlight a few. We had 32 parents who completed and employees, so mostly parents, some employees, a computer basics course, thanks to Partners in Education. Um, we, I got to also participate in differentiated support from the curriculum and instruction department. And you can see this is a team of our secondary school leaders who are working on problems of practice and really how to bring the key components of their LCAP to life. Um, great support from Ellen Barger and team. And then I found my way into the education celebration. There was like a last minute ticket. And we had 13 Lompoc Unified School District employees recognized at that event. And these are the Cabrillo High School madrigals who kicked off the event and I was blown away by them. And then lastly, which you may not know, I came to find out that there are 40, were 40 Lompoc students that were signed up to have a paid internship in Lompoc. And I said, I need help in my new position. So this is Isela Ortiz. She is just starting her senior year at Lompoc High School and she is my social media analyst intern. Her ultimate goal is to go into the armed forces and she showed up so strong, I would say her uh, performance has been outstanding. The 80 hours of work were allocated, she has completed in 20 hours and beyond expectations, including, and I'll give you an example, analyzing every single school website, what's common, what's different and her recommendations for improvements with key examples she pulled has blown us all away. Today I walked her around the district office because we needed to get out of the office. And she had, I think, four adults mentoring her, including the office assistant at Hapgood Elementary School where she went as a child. And it was just a beautiful reunion and lots of words of encouragement for her future. So the power of the internship is so huge. So thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Um, there, there's a couple of little errors on this slide which surprised me, so I'll clear those up. But we, if you don't know about Lompoc Unified School District, we have about 9,000 students, 1,000 employees. We mostly serve students who are Latino. We have nine elementary schools, two middle schools, two high schools, two continuation schools and one adult learning center. I think you know, our superintendent has been in her position for 18 months, Dr. Clara Finneran. And prior to me arriving, the staff board went through a process of envisioning and creating a new mission and what's in the center is really what we focused on today with all of our employees in our 2024, 25 kickoff, which is trusting relationships and high expectation ensures that every student achieves. Toward the end of rebuilding trust, as you may know, we have come very close to passing multiple bonds over the years, including in 2022 with a 54.46% approval rate, just shy of 55%. When I read that before I interviewed, I'm like, I have to move and have two more votes. This has to happen. Um, and we're excited about the state bond. If it passes, our $160 million bond would be augmented with another $48 million. So we're excited about the opportunity. We have early signs for polling of 65% support. So we're very excited. We have some flipped folks who in the past were not supportive, who are supportive now. And we have um, lots of community support and I'll talk a little bit about uh, Future for Lompoc Youth and what they're doing. But our overall facilities master plan is about $450 million. So this will make some progress. For me, more than anything, it's about the relationship with the community and the school district that this would really symbolize sort of a new way forward. Lots of, we would just say you can drive by and the schools look amazing. And then you hear the stories and see the pictures, which I'm not going to share today, but wanted to, of what really needs to happen. I'm really here to talk about three programs that are unique at this point in time because I think some of them may expand for Lompoc youth. I want to share my appreciation that you made this request because my title has two parts, communications and engagement. And I've spent the first part of my time getting to really build and bond with the school folks. This took me out into the community partnerships quickly and I got to make really great connections and learn a lot. So thank you. I promise not to go overboard about the Dangermond Preserve, but it is absolutely phenomenal. I cannot believe that this resource is in our county. I've been here 30 years. How did I not know? Absolutely stunning. Um, we will be going there, the superintendent, myself and the coordinator overseeing this program at the end of this month. Um, I don't know if you know the history, but the Bixby family who acquired, they came from Maine, acquired land in Orange County and Los Angeles, eventually acquired two ranches in Lompoc, the Coho and Halama Ranches. And after a series of bits and starts with another developer, eventually the Nature Conservancy was able to have this beautiful preserve in its hands, thanks to Laura and Jack Dangermond, um, which I understand is the largest single donation they have ever received. They ultimately revealed their names because they wanted to inspire more giving and that has happened with another funder in Bakersfield. So just such a beautiful story. What's exciting to me about this preserve is how undeveloped and untouched it is and how diverse it is. Um, I chose this photo because it shows all the diversity in the place for adult and student learning. Um, the size alone is a little bit overwhelming. And then as you can see, the number of 200 wildlife species and 600 plant species. Everything there is in this microcosm for learning. The educational, the environmental education program is really what I wanted to talk and make you aware of really in the short amount of time, is their vision is to cultivate the next generation of scientific leaders to help solve complex problems, really focus on conservation. The way that they do that, which is near and dear to my heart, is through place-based, hands-on and inquiry learning in the field with real scientists and graduate students from UCSB. That can be no better. Um, to date, they have served 1,700 students and adults. I want to say something about all three of these programs, the way they talk to me about them. And if you look at the data, they're all relatively new, starting in 2019, 2022 and 2021. So as we look at what I would call impact data, it's going to reflect both the time in our history with post-COVID, the need for buses, the launches that closed the Halama Road, all of the things. All of the leaders expressed a desire for more participation and more impact and where they are in their growth cycle. But I think it's really amazing that in the spring we served, uh, they served 271 middle school and high school students and then adults as well. Um, part of what I appreciate when I talk to the executive director, Diego, is they're also making the connection between learning and social emotional learning. And that's why I chose this quote. This is a quote from a Lompoc High School student that was able to reflect on really how uncomfortable they were in the environment, but how they were able to learn and enjoy. And I was thinking how much nature deprivation our students have. And even that first trip can be so meaningful, just who am I in nature? Not who am I on my phone, iPad, et cetera. So that is the Dangermond Preserve. I'm not going to go back. I would love for Diego to come to a deep dive for all of us on this. It's absolutely fabulous. The teen center was new to me. There is quite, there's a story in Lompoc that there's not a lot of programs. As a new person, I feel there are a lot of programs and I feel in my role, I can be helpful in telling the story and coordinating, something that's on my mind. Um, the teen center, I had a wonderful visit with them. They were created in 2022 in the summer, so even newer. Um, their goal is to address out, limited access to out-of-school opportunities. The center is run by teens and they have a new space. They've moved. I got to visit. They have classrooms, a study area, very much like a space teens would want to be and hang out. They've moved to a place that's closer to Lompoc High School and Lompoc Middle School where the majority of students are. They've also addressed some busing needs. As you know, Lompoc has the village area, so they have classrooms in the village and at Lompoc High School to address busing challenges. Uh, their goal is to provide a safe space for the students. You really feel that when you go in there. I feel like I was an adult in a student space. And they're really looking to um, support students and empower them. They have all sorts of programs. They have leadership fellows, which include scholarships. They use a program that acronym called the PEAK, which I think used to be called PKE that started in Santa Barbara. They're very proud of that program and I could show you a little bit of their impact data. They did an evaluation. And then what I thought was really great is they have a lot of activities for kids. And in particular, I was excited about all of the excursions they do in the summer. The types of, and they have their own buses, which is really great. The types of things that I think um, many students are privileged, take for granted, that a lot of these students would not be able to do. Universal Studios, hiking at La Purissima, all of the things around California they take them to. Um, I don't think they have as many students as they would like, but for any of the students to be able to do that and have the cost of that covered is amazing. So some of their data, um, in the last couple of years, they've served 135 students in the teen center, 15 leadership fellows, they've had 60 students in the uh, Yes I Can Cisipoide Program and they have given over $40,000 in scholarships to students. And then they did a self-evaluation and about 75% of students showed improvement in their grades, which I thought was excellent impact data. Um, and then they started, they're starting to pick up some early data on GPA and tutoring. Um, and don't know if you all know, but tutoring is one of those things that during COVID really took fire and I think people have become a lot smarter about collecting data on that. And then I love this quote that the teen center helped a student get their life back on track and really have a place to do work and feel safe. So that is the Lompoc Teen Center. And then lastly, Future for Lompoc Youth. Another program that launched recently in 2021, they support junior and senior high school students and they are focused on equipping students with the skills they need to have a thriving future. They want students to feel safe and confident in advocating for their future. So a lot of their work, I'll give you program names, is really starting with the students and what they want to learn and do. Um, they work really hard to foster connections with folks with power in communities, whether it's at UCLA or in Lompoc itself, so that they can work to improve the community. They are a powerhouse group of students. So their programs range from career readiness, really working on getting kids into college and career. They have a customer service academy, helping students who want to enter the workforce. And then they have California Freedom Summer Action Research Program, that I'll talk a little bit about. Through that program, they did research with students in Santa Maria as well. I tried to find the actual study on the UCLA website to provide you and I was unable to have a hard copy, have a digital copy. Um, but they were able to find out what the needs are in the community. And most of, I think they had like over 80% of the kids who they interviewed want improved school facilities. So the Future for Lompoc Youth is out and about advocating for the bond and it is they are really amazing. Um, they've served 250 students to date. Um, they had an evaluation by WestEd, so an external evaluation, and you can see really great results from what they found out about how the kids are performing and what they think. Um, you can also see a few quotes that I pulled. Uh, they do college tours, so getting kids on campus to help them see themselves in that space. I think that's my last slide. So in conclusion, I just want to say, I really appreciate both, we appreciate, on behalf of the Lompoc School District, we appreciate the partnership and collegiality with the county education office and your staff. It's really been great. And um, I personally appreciate in my newer role, the opportunity to dig into some of these programs that's really launching me into the next phase of my discovery. So thank you. Thank you for having me.
That was a very, very good presentation. Thank you. Um, entertaining, informative, um, reassuring, positive. Those are not things that we get to see all the time. I'm sure other board members would like to make a comment or.
Mary Beth? Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Sally. That was, that was wonderful. I had mentioned the work that was transpiring on the Dangermond Preserve to Susan because I think it's, it's an incredible opportunity. It's unprecedented because as you know, the Nature Conservancy deals in conserving land. So the idea, the notion that they would actually be inviting in students uh, to learn was completely foreign to them. And the foundation that I support uh, helped create the environmental education program. So this was pre-COVID, so there were a lot of plans. There were several years of visioning, what that might look like. And to get to the, the sort of uh, vision that it would be crucial in creating a pipeline of environmental leadership, recognizing that many of the students in Lompoc have a fractured version of, of nature. There's not a lot of green space. The Lompoc community. Um, track and field project was evidence of that. And Diego Ortiz was finally hired to do that. But what I wanted to mention was he is working hand in hand with teachers in the Lompoc Unified School District from an advisory committee so that the work that's done, that it's, the curriculum was developed by a national nature bridge, which they work primarily out of state parks um, to create a place-based experiential learning that was grounded in 21st century science standards, but also a context would be created for in-school. So it's not an isolated field trip. They're learning beforehand, they're on the preserve and then they're learning um, how to reflect on what that means. So they write a letter to themselves, which is what you saw there. So I'm excited that it's happening at the middle school level and they're expanding, trying to get it to be um, a program that sort of follows students. And then the REACH program works with the high school students and they get to spend the night out there. And it's, it's like nothing else. There's Trust Real and Mariners. Anyway, go on. It's so transformative to be there, but thank you for that. Um, I'm, I'm really excited about the potential for that one. And then the Lompoc Teen Center, we have to, have to shout out Cliff Lambert and Guy Walker, amazing individuals who really are responsible for getting that going, Mitch Torina. Um, and that was modeled on the PEAK program and we've had presentations here about PEAK. So we know that the, the, the model of, of that the, the, the model of, of that kind of learning engagement is just, it's so powerful. And that grew the Truvine fellowship, all that they were working out of that church. And it's just exciting to see that happening. And Explore Ecology is coming in. And then to our earlier conversations, there's Leap that's going to be putting some infant rooms. So we've got sort of a wraparound approach to some of the underserved needs at Lompoc. So glad you're there to talk about it. Congratulations on your new role and a lot to do.
Thank you. Yeah, I, we met with one of the Santa Barbara Roundtable members yesterday, who I know well from Carpinteria and talked about, you know, in so many ways, Lompoc is so ripe to have more coordination of external partnerships. And so while I'm staying in my role currently, I just really want to get people together and focus on key indicators where we're, they're all the same kids. They're all the same families in many ways, just like Carpinteria because it's so small. And then how do we coordinate? Everyone wants to grow and there's just a finite number of students. So I think part of what we've been talking about is how to help families and parents become more aware of the opportunities and help choose the ones that are right for them. And, and maximize participation, of course.
The list goes on and on. The Cabrillo High School Aquarium, another great resource. Very unique access for LUSD students to be able to go to the Space Force Base. Not available to a lot of other people. So there are so many wonderful things that, that are going on in your school district. I really salute you for all of the great things that's happened.
When I saw her and recognized her, I was trying to remember the date, which neither of us will remember, in this room at a Partners in Education meeting, I think it was, was it a Harding UCSB collaboration? It was so exciting and it was just so innovative and you're thinking, wow, this is what education is doing. Fast forward now, years later, she's still doing it. So my hat's off to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
No, no. I was on the Hancock Foundation.
I knew him before that. That's quite all right. Absolutely. Wanted to know how much we appreciate, how much we appreciate that presentation and that information. It's, you know, a catalyst for positivity and moving forward. All right, we are now going to go to item 21, the public hearing. And I'm going to open the public hearing on textbook and instructional materials compliance. And this is a required, is required as part of the Williams Case Settlement Act. So do we have any public here that would like to comment? Hearing none, seeing none, I close the public hearing. And now item 22 is an action item to recommend the adoption of the resolution regarding textbook and instructional material compliance, which is required. I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Oh, roll call.
Okay, Mrs. Alvarez Flores.
Yes, I. My brain.
Thank you, Mrs. Cardy.
Hi.
Mrs. DeWort.
Hi.
Ms. Erman.
Hi.
Mrs. Bros.
Hi.
Mr. Howell.
Hi.
Mr. Porter.
And I.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Excellent. And now we get to jump back to page three of the agenda on the superintendent's report, item number 10.
All right, thank you. We'll go back to the superintendent's report and I really appreciate it. I wanted to say, you know, when the, when the board decided to, to not convene in July and convene here in August instead, you know, I, I just want to say how much the time was appreciated by all of us. I'm sure you may have felt the same, but for us, it just, this summer has felt very intense, but also a calm a bit so that we could plan. It was just an opportunity to continuously plan for what we're ramping up for, for the school year. So just want to say thank you. I didn't realize what the outcome would be really of not having that meeting, but it really did help. And I just wanted to say, I appreciated it so that we could plan very intensely, like I said, and also calmly. So you have the report in front of you and you can see a lot of the actions that have taken place since we last met. And rather than go through all of them, I just wanted to point out on the bottom of page one, this, this convening that the Santa Barbara County School Boards Association in partnership with our office is putting together for our own teams, so for educators, for our school board members and for others in schools, just to learn a little bit more about workforce housing. The team, Bridget Boblitz and Kami Barnwell and myself have, and the chair of the Santa Barbara County School Boards Association have been meeting with Rob Fredericks and Bob. Let me make sure I got it. I want to say Havlicek, both from the Santa Barbara County Housing Authority and Santa Barbara City Housing Authority to learn a lot more. One of the things, and you all may have, have, may have such expertise around workforce housing, but I've learned that when you ask one question, 20 more questions pop up and the lanes of understanding is super complex. Not, not insurmountable, but really complicated. And I have a deep appreciation for what it means for if a district might have any property to either convert or consider housing. Or if they don't, or if they do, another, another thought might be what's happening with housing that happens around their school district and the impacts of the housing port on them. So learning a lot. And we set out a six to seven thirty Zoom. I can tell you that we're not going to get too far with the 90 minutes that we have set, but we're going to get, we're going to get to a 101 basis on this, a good learning and primer for people. So just want to tell you, I'm really eager to step into that area. I know some county offices have begun moving in that direction themselves. We, we've, as we've spoken before, the property, we don't have property to develop, but we still have a lot of learning to do. And I'm really excited to do that learning with the team and then share it back out with the community at that, on that Zoom. So just wanted to amplify that. A couple other items that I wanted to share with you today, let me, let me make sure, oh, there, there is a, let me just stop and see if there's a question from you about the report that I read, I wrote, and then I'll share two items that are not in the report. Anything that I can, yes, Nadra.
Just had a question about this workforce housing meeting. Is that something that the board members will be invited to as well?
Yes, absolutely. Would love to have you.
Okay, yeah, just wanted.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Judy? I think there's a lot to learn in the workforce housing from agencies that have been engaged, such as UCSB and a lot of the nonprofits and the different emergency services and facilities. There's so much to learn from experience that you just can't even anticipate.
It's really true. It's really true. So, yeah. One of the entities, by the way, that's been working pretty deeply in this is the California School Boards Association. They've developed a lot of resources and materials and workshops even. And Bridget has had a, a deep conversation with CSBA. Lompoc Unified is moving forward with a lot of housing plans as well as Santa Barbara Unified. So more to come, but just wanted to lift that up and say I'm excited about and eager to learn and also share countywide. Okay, so I, hearing no other questions about the report, then you can see lots of work happening. I wanted to lift up something that we're doing, that I want to give credit to our communications team under the leadership of Kami Barnwell. Anna is going to pass out a draft. It has a label draft and it has today's date because we're still working out some of the, the components of it. But let me give you a moment to take that. And please feel free to peruse while I talk. Just wanted to share this with you. This is a, a report to the community that we've been working on. And we know there, there are 200 different programs SBCO offers. So it's very hard to say which ones should we, you know, share. But we wanted to share some of the things that we've been working on that are new, like our safety work to, to lift up the early care and education work, you know, lots of the support for teachers that we provide to educators and recognition. So this is, I think, a really a beautiful display, Kami and team and the whole team, Delaney and Isabel, thank you so much. You're right here in the comms team to, to try to through, through our report, share a bit of a story of our impact and who we are and what we do, how we serve our reach. So in a relatively short report, we're really trying to share about public education, about Santa Barbara County and about SBCO. What I, something as you're looking to, all of the photos, I'm so proud. These are the photos of our children throughout Santa Barbara County. None are stock photos and educators too. There, Luis Medina, who's also part of the team, just does such an incredible job with being out and taking photos. So just wanted to share that with you. We're at a, a draft state where we're going to be sending this out widely and our aim is to make it an annual report. And we've tried this, we've tried that, and now we're here. So if you have any feedback for me or for Kami or for our team, we welcome it. But any, any first impressions that you wouldn't mind sharing that are really awesome and positive? We'll take them. Before I share one more thing, yeah.
What is the ultimate distribution? I mean, this looks terrific. Is it, how broadly will it be distributed?
I'll invite Kami to share a bit about our, our strategy here, but we really wanted to be able to share with people. We know people still ask, what do y'all do at SBCO? Yeah. And so we wanted to be able to answer that in a way.
Right. Now that we're at the point where it's at this level, we're really starting to hone in on where are all the places that we want to make sure that we distribute this. We have a, a really expansive distribution list that we use for many other things that we do when we communicate with our communities. So of course, all the districts, the superintendents, the district offices, principals, and then beyond that, to think of all the other places where you want, you know, we could have it in our lobby and in our auditorium. We could, we would be sending it to all of the people who subscribe to the newsletter. We can share it digitally. We can share it through social media and by request. And, and we're open to ideas and suggestions for anybody who would like to get a copy of it. They could request when we mail it to them. So we're open to ideas, but at this point, we're starting kind of small and step by step, and then see what kind of response we get. Does that answer that question?
Yes.
Sure. And I liked your idea you said about, we were talking about how it would be presented on our website. And you can, you know, you've seen maybe the software that allows you to kind of look like you're flipping through a magazine. It will be presented that way as well. So people could share it easily and enjoy it that way.
Very well done.
I, I just wanted to say that this is incredible and it's such a resource for the community just to know, because there are so many programs and services and just the community doesn't even know sometimes what they are, just as we were mentioning. So I think this is, this is phenomenal and it looks beautiful. So great job, everyone.
Kami was, as you were leaping through it, I know I was doing what you shouldn't do, which is pass out something and talk while you're doing it. But I was introducing Isabel and Delaney, who are in the comms, on the comms team, who've probably revised this a thousand times so far. We're, we're close to being done here, but Kami, thanks so much for your leadership and wanted to give you the, the first look. That, yeah, yeah. That class photo is something we've said and Kami had said this many times. Every time we look at it, we have a new, a new favorite, you know? You'll see a student there. You'll find, find the student with the sticker on her forehead. It is adorable. It's a current favorite. Yeah, yeah. So let me, let me just go off to, go to the next and final comment. It actually has to do with this, this intentionality we put on Join the Journey. Okay? And Join the Journey is, is a, I'll call it a campaign, a, a, a big push that we're, that we're working on at SBCO. The board, you, you well know from our presentations, but also your knowledge of our school districts, that we need, we need support with our workforce. And it's not only in, with teachers, it's bus drivers, it's with cafeteria workers, it's with front office staff, it's, it's every facet of education. I think we just heard, Vida, you shared 100 new teachers in Santa Maria, Benita, for example. And over the, about a year, maybe longer, Mari Baptiste Gonzalez here, who, who facilitates a network who's hiding, but is here, I see her. The network that she convenes of the HR representatives, human resources representatives throughout the county were, are always all together talking about wanting to amplify, lift up education and, and invite people into our journey. And Kami and the team are hearing from our own ECE staff, special education staff, everyone in Bridget's division, everyone throughout the organization that we need more highly qualified people. So we, we were beginning to launch a Join the Journey campaign. And if you look up here, what we are doing is we have now the comms team and only the comms team together have created the scripts in the video for three individuals so far. Diane Campo is from the Lompoc Unified School District as a para educator. So there's a video about her. Erin Shirzen is a speech language pathologist for SBCO. We've created a video about her. And Lupe Medrano is a bus driver for Galita Union School District, and we've created a video about her. And we wanted to share with you today just Lupe's video, one, to whet your appetite because you'll want more, but two, to give you a sample. And it's under two minutes. So we thought we would show you Lupe's video, but know that there's more videos in this, you know, folder, so to speak. So let's see if we can please show Lupe.
I'm Lupe Medrano, a school bus driver for the Galita Schools. When I first became a school bus driver, I thought I was only looking for part-time temporary work. But one year passed and then another. And here I am 20 years later, transporting students safely to and from school. People often underestimate the level of responsibility involved in being a school bus driver. We drive a 40-foot bus filled with up to 80 students, conduct pre-trip inspections every morning and must also complete regular renewals of our school bus certificates. This role requires patience, strong communication skills and good behavior management. As a school bus driver, I am often the first school staff our students see, greeting them with a smile and a good morning, and the last one they see in the afternoon. I am inspired knowing I play this vital role in a student's journey. Bus drivers are in high demand in schools and districts across Santa Barbara County. If you're considering a career in education, I can say from 20 years of experience that working as a school bus driver is worth your consideration. The people you get to work with, the students you serve and the community you are part of, make it a wonderful place to land. Come join me and be a driver in a child's journey.
Across the county, schools are seeking incredible individuals to fill positions both in and outside of the classroom. We invite you to join the journey and launch your career in education.
We invite you to join the journey and launch your career in education today. Yeah. So really great job. We've got three of those videos and they're just wonderful. Delaney herself was on that bus with Luis. But you can see, what we're wanting to do is share this out with our school districts so they can share it. They can use, you know, send it out to their social media, ours as well. And I'm curious if you, as you're looking at it, can envision this being shown in places? Like if you even have ideas of where we might be able to share this so that people would be interested in education? Does anything come to mind? I would love to just do a popcorn. Joe, and then?
Popcorn's a perfect lead in. You know, I, we don't go to that many movies, but I, I, it seems like on occasion, they're really looking for something as filler. I mean, they have the, the trailers and then they have some pretty random things. It's a very broad cross-section. It'd be worth asking Metropolitan and others if they'd show it.
That's great. Thanks, Joe, for that feedback. And then Nadra and Bruce?
So this is really goofy, but you know how gas stations now have the little screens on gas pumps? So, I mean, you're sitting there, you know, waiting for your tank to get filled up. So it's like, maybe I wouldn't do it. It's like, I, you know, I know Sally, she could use a job.
That's true. That's a great idea. I'm fond of, we're fond of that. Nadra?
With streaming platforms, some of them have ads and some of them are national, but some of them are local as well. So that is a place that they could be placed as well.
Thank you. Mary Beth?
I'm thinking the South Coast Chamber should probably at least be aware. And maybe they could post these things on their website, but you know, the bus driver shortage has interestingly impacted the ability for students from Long Pope to get to Dangerman. So now we've had to create a partnership with, with MTD.
Great. Thank you. Michelle?
You just gave me an idea, the local rotaries. A lot of retired people.
Yes.
And that was an inspiring, make me want to be a bus driver. Talk to the kids, I mean, it's, it's. I mean, if, if you are looking for something to do as a retired person.
Great idea.
So I thought that, and also I love, I love John Paul Muntari. I think those public service announcements, maybe even, I don't know how he can highlight it and then show it on, you know, on, I don't know if they do PSAs on, on their, on their local news.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you for all these suggestions.
Cause local news highlights different people in the community that get a certificate or do something special. I, they must be able to do this. I know my son-in-law is a bus driver because he actually saw something on a, like a commercial. Announcing that they needed bus drivers in our area. And so.
It's great. Thank you. Two things I've learned. One is if you talk with Vida long enough, she has a relative in every profession, in every profession. It's really great. I love it. Like you must, and number two is, uh, thank you for your energetic participation. You know, we're thinking about what can be for free and what we might invest in, in launching. We, we've got to invest in this launch of joining the journey back into education. So those are really great. Again, all full credit to the communications team for this. It's truly beautiful and inspiring and wonderful. Yeah, thank you.
And you have the, the code right here, the, I, I wanted to see what it was, so. And I know a lot of people will do that. It goes right into the website. Yeah. Oh, I love the enthusiasm and the positivity. That's what we need more of today. The consent agenda is in the agenda, items 11 through 16.
I'll move to approve the items in the consent agenda.
Thank you. My second. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Yay. Okay, items, information items, 17, these are all things that we see, I think, every month. Personnel, Williams Uniform Compliance Act, correspondence. The second interim report, I do want to point out the confirming the acceptance of our second interim report by the state. That's always good news to hear and we shouldn't take it for granted. We should celebrate it because boy, if you don't get it, it's not a happy time. Okay, we've done 20, 21, 22, so now we're on to 23. And this, I believe this is the one, um, Michelle, you were mentioning during comments. And it's, and is this the one, it's in Monterey and September 13th, 14th and 15th. Consistent with board policy, we need to approve the reimbursement of actual necessary expenses for board members to attend the CSBA's County Board Member Services Conference. So again, I need a motion.
A motion?
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Okay. That was under the information items.
Yeah, I thought I would confuse everyone. I, I, in the past, I've handed them out and I sort of quit doing it. There were three graduates. So I write a letter, first paragraph's the same for all the others are unique to them. Of the graduates, I always give them to Anna, who gets them to the student and in the record. And I've just decided to make an extra copy today. So everybody will be confused.
No, I think we're unconfused now and we do so much appreciate, Nadra, the cards that you get for us to sign to acknowledge this. This is a, a very significant accomplishment for these students through the juvenile court system to get their, uh, high school diplomas. And some of them actually are receiving ed- education at the juvenile court school. Towards their community college work at Allen Hancock College even. And when they get out, they would then be able to proceed at Hancock. So this is, this is how we deal with changing the course for individuals. And it's, it's very, very important that we do it. Thank you very much, Joe and Nadra and the board for your interest and concern. Okay, and now we're going to go to another information item. This one, we're going to actually talk about. Number 24 is a report by the Board Organization Committee. And Mr. Howell is the Chair of that committee. I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Members of the committee are Vida, Nadra, Joe. Just a quick recap, in May, we talked about the recommendations that we had a number of things under consideration and we had recommendations in May to focus on A, website enhancement. B, an onboarding handbook. And then C, there, there are longer-term projects, a mission statement or retreat, other things. The decision was by the, by the board, that would be considered in January for further action or not. But the initial focus is on two things. As far as website enhancement, Kami, Susan and I met to talk about how the county board element tab on the county ad website could be enhanced. We reviewed our current county office website. We reviewed a number, Kami set all this up. It was, it was very efficient in a Zoom meeting. We looked at other county websites. Some, there were some really good ideas from that. Also, the CCBE trustees handbook had a lot of really meaningful information, explanations, et cetera. We all agree that what we should do is really get the best of what others have done. And really curate that and, and not spend a lot of time and effort reinventing the wheel. So with that in mind, Kami and her department, we just saw how talented they are in the materials they handed out. They are developing a draft template webpage. And that is called a term I didn't know. I, I could try and use it and impress people, but I'd probably embarrass myself. That would be a sandbox. So that is, um, you, somebody say, what do you do at the county board? Say, we're really focusing on a sandbox in the month of August. But that really is a template to see how it might look, but, but long before effort goes into this is what we're going to do. It also is going to have within it a, where's the term? It will feature accordion-style tabs, another term, but you click on what you want to see. And these various subparts come up. So the feeling is we, Kami and her department can come up with a template that we can look at and have input on. Then depending on what the board, probably as early as the September, what we decide. We then can do what I think is going to be a really efficient and a very effective upgrade of what the county board does as part of the county office. The second big project that we decided on, I'm going to ask Vida to report on, and that's the onboarding handbook.
And we had a list of things to move through. Thank God this was here too, because it really helped kind of package everything and make it more part of what we do here. So we, we included some schedules, we included some things that were unique to what we do as a board. And I'm anxious to kind of see everything that we talked about because she put down some notes in terms of bringing it back to you ladies and putting together a draft for us. But it was an hour of work really well spent and, and just looking through the pieces. I mean, we were looking at responsibilities, the trainings, some of the ideas for that. Who or what we as board members are responsible for? Where do we meet? Because that's always a question in terms of logistics of what we have to do in terms of purpose to get to one area of the county and the other. And, and looking at all of that, I'm anxious to see our final draft. So thank you.
So the, the wrapping up that we, the committee was charged with doing, with considering a number of things, the board said focus on two. Each of those are in process. The committee may well meet again to fine tune what we have to be presented for the board. No action, nothing formal will happen unless and until the board acts. End of report.
Amen.
Um, thank you. Thank you so much for doing that. I really think this is a really great effort to, you know, with elections and turnover, it's going to be very, it's just going to help it be a seamless transition. It really helped me when I, when I came on board and, and the, and the organization CCBE and with this handbook. There's a huge effort and it was a collaboration between the county superintendents and CSBA attorneys. So everybody signed off on it. So there was just, it was a, it was, it was very positive. These are only in print and hardcover. They don't have a digital version yet. But I know that CC, the former CCBE board members who are now, uh, they've got their own delegate group. They're working on how they're going to incorporate this. So just keeping, you know, with county services for, within CSBA, there's going to be more to come. So I hope that'll just make it super easy for us to just piggyback on, on, and you know, so it's less work on, on our staff. That it's, it's available to us. That's a great, you know, we pay for the membership. Should just take advantage of it. Thank you.
I think CCBE is now Division 14? It's its own division, whatever number it is. But that's how they've integrated it directly into CSBA rather than being a different organization. Okay, excellent. Any other comments? Good work, team. High fives all the way around. Now we've got a couple of discussion items. First of all, this has been mentioned a few times about our board meeting start time. And consideration of our timing schedule for board meetings versus those of school districts within the county that are much later than we meet. So, um, I think it's really important when we consider our start time. We realize that the county board covers a very large geographical area. From Carpinteria on the south to North Santa Maria on the north. Area four is bigger than a lot of the other counties in the whole state. It's actually, is it Cuayameta? Vandenberg Village almost. And, um, that school districts typically don't cover that much geography. So for people coming to the meetings, staff and board members. It's a much shorter commute, much easier commute than what county board members may face. So to me, that's one of the factors that I just would like us to keep in mind that we are not geographically structured like a you, normal, average school district within the county. So any other comments on our start times? Michelle?
Um, just so you know, other county offices within the state of California, most of their board meetings all start at five or 5:30. Um, and they're very large counties like San Diego County and things like that. So there are always issues with traffic. I've attended Santa Barbara County Planning Commission meetings and they have that option for the public to zoom. You know, it's a, it's a live broadcasted and they have people that come in on Zoom and speak. And they can speak from Santa Maria or Santa Barbara. So that is another space to use for, you know, being accessible to the public. I like this to come to the board to have it reviewed just because we show that we listened to the, there were 48 those letters that we received from the special education educators and counselors and specialists. That they, you know, requested our meetings to be more accessible for, you know, they, I think they felt shut out that our meetings were at two o'clock and they had no ability to come and, and speak and they wanted to. So, and the other, the other, um, other reason why I would advocate for a five o'clock or a 5:30 meeting is because a lot of people have day jobs. And I've spoken to people that are interested in running for the county school board and they were, they asked me what time our meetings were and they go, oh, I can't do that. That, that just eliminates a large swath of people from participating and, you know, and, and serving public office. We also have student representatives now that it's the, you know, the, the, it passed in the legislation that you have student representatives. And I've watched these student representatives at other county board meetings. They can all attend at a five or 5:30 meeting. They necessarily can't attend a two o'clock meeting. So there you get the participation of a, of a student and they, they, you know, they, this is a revolving seat. And they do actually, you know, have great, really great discussions with the students. And, um, that, that's probably where, that's all I have to say.
Not true. So I know that this topic has come up a few times. And I think initially, one of the first conversations started when we were planning out our meeting times for this year. And I definitely, there, there's some of the points that Board Member DeWard mentioned that I agree with that I've heard as well in terms of making it more accessible for the general public, having more people it, uh, have the ability to, um, to serve on the board, to be able to attend. That said, I know that it is, it can be difficult in terms of organization for staff or driving for board members. So I, I, I like to think in terms of compromise sometimes. And so I know this year, we have increased our number of meetings to Santa Maria to kind of reconcile the travel concern. kind of reconcile the travel concern. And so with that, um, the thought, my thought would be, are there some meeting times so that we're able to open up that accessibility without putting an added burden on travel for board on, and travel for staff to maybe have some meetings at, you know, the two o'clock time and then some meetings at the five, um, o'clock time. I don't know if that would be more difficult to do because you're not having that consistency. Um, but I do recognize both the concerns with the travel, but then also at the same time, the concerns of the accessibility as well. Just to add, sorry, um, the idea of being able to, um, meet remotely or virtually so that we can, if, um, if travel is, is an issue, some of the members can meet virtually if the travel is a concern.
I just had, I just had a question. We don't zoom these then, right?
Um, I'll, let me turn to Kami if you wouldn't mind describing the accessibility of ours and these. That would be great.
Okay. Thank you. We do, uh, zoom. We're, we're live on Zoom right now.
Okay.
Yes. We have very low attendance.
Yes.
And, um, we offer Spanish interpretation as well. So that's happening behind this curtain right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just, if someone wanted to observe right now what we're doing real time, they can do that.
They can.
Right now.
And we also record these meetings using the Zoom platform and we upload those both in Spanish and English to our website. As soon as it, it takes a few, you know, 24 hours processing time, then they're on YouTube and we load them up to our website for, with the minutes.
Cause I was just wondering if maybe we can get that out there in terms of people knowing that that is an actual available opportunity. And especially through the districts, maybe the districts can announce that. Even at their board meetings that there is a vehicle for hearing the, the Santa Barbara County School Board meeting, because there's a lot that pertains to them. I just never. I think one of the things that I would like us to explore as far as the accessibility issue is something that Santa Maria Benita does at their board meetings. You can, the public can call in ahead of time and leave a message for public comment that is played at the board meetings live. So that everyone has an opportunity to voice their concerns, their issues, make their statements live real time and not be there at the meeting. I think that that's something I'd like to see us look at. Cause that might facilitate accessibility quite well.
So when I, when I was on the local district board, we, we addressed this ad nauseam for years. And we had different start times and different this, we moved it to that. And uh, I, I don't dispute anything that Michelle said, or anybody else said, they're all absolutely true. The 48 special ed teachers. Those are legitimate concerns. But my, in my experience, there's like the philosophical part of it. And then there's the realistic part of that. I, I, I think. I'm very sorry. I rang my phone from my type. The, uh, I, I think we've been over backwards over the last few years to really push ourselves out there in terms of having the meetings recorded, uh, putting them up on the, I'm so sorry. Um, yeah, really. Yeah. So I think we've done a lot al- already, uh, especially the ability to go on YouTube or the website or whatever it is and interview and, and see what's going on. I love the idea about Santa Maria Benita. That would be easy. Another thing that we might do without adjusting our board time is to have a second period of public comment at the very end. So that somebody that can't show up at two o'clock, maybe they could show up at four o'clock. So I, I, I would prefer some smaller half measures instead of moving the whole meeting to, to five or 5:30. Again, that's just, we, we all come with different baggage. That's, that's my baggage. That's my experience on making a big move that really doesn't make any difference at the end of the day. And this is our meeting. But at the end of the day, it's our meeting that public can watch and in a very limited way participate. But this is our meeting and it's for us to make decisions.
But the, in the, uh, January, I believe the board organization committee considered, as Ms. Erman suggested or indicated different locations, different start times, just with this idea of incremental change. We, we did add more Santa Maria off meetings. We now have Zoom. I, I think, uh, maybe with a new year and planning for a new year, it would make sense to consider, and there is a lot of progress with the Zoom, with the things we've done. Look at what we've done and maybe at, consider some of these things alike Bruce just mentioned. An additional public comment period. There are a lot of things that can be do, that can be done that are incremental that I think will not impose the leaving at six o'clock in the dark to drive over the hill either way. So I think there are a lot of possibilities.
I just thought of something else. Um, one of the things that I feel like we've all come in contact with is our perspective and our personal perspective may feel like, well, this is the reality when we don't necessarily know what the reality or what the statistical data is. And so I say that to, 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 to wonder, is there a way to survey and if it's too involved, it, it's may not be possible, but to survey like, um, teachers, um, educational services and programs to just see if that like changing the time is something that the public even wants because, you know, to, um, uh, Bruce, uh, to, sorry, Ms. Porter's, um, comment. We may say like, okay, we've heard this feedback. We make the changes, but then we don't necessarily get that a participation that we wanted to have available. So if we are thinking seriously about making these changes, is there any way that we can get some data behind? Is it really worth making a change or not?
Uh, originally like, um, Ms. Erman, I thought, oh, well, maybe we need to toggle between times. Um, but I think that's far too complicated. And I would very much favor a workaround that suggests that comments are welcome. They can be in the form of a, a, a recording, which I think is brilliant. In the past, we've certainly had letters that we all receive. There is no opportunity to comment back to a public commenter. So we really just need to receive the information. As long as there are multiple modalities to receive that information. I think we've, we've met our obligation there and then response can come forward later. But I really never thought about moving public comment to the end of the meeting and that might very well be an option. You know, we're mandated to have later reporting dates, um, meeting dates rather, and we can abide by that. Uh, and then when we have presentations, you know, we're working with the presenter at their convenience. So I think we're making the necessary accommodations that are being requested. And as to your, uh, inquiry about how do we know and how can we assess the need? We know how many people visit the website. We certainly know how many visits that we receive, how many views. And it is very low attendance. But, but we, it, we analyzed all of this when we came upon that solution. You know, and it, it is the right thing to do. And I, I am so glad that we took the time to really do it carefully and, and, um, that we received good feedback from staff. In the interest of economics and staff time, I think we came up with the right formula and I think we will in this regard too. But those are all some really, really good suggestions that we can do a little deeper dive on. Yeah. Food for thought. Um, I have one other comment and then we'll go to you, Mr. Porter to wrap it up. Um, and now it went right out of my. Why don't you go now?
I'll cover it for you.
Yeah, I'll cover it real quick. We'll go to Bruce.
Thank you. Um, the other thing is we're, we're going to have a very different board starting in December. So we may want to, to allow this conversation to continue into the first few months of the next boards, uh, series of sessions. Uh, they may have very different preferences than the current board. So I think at, at this time, it's not the right time to be making those kinds of decisions. But let that new board, uh, kind of decide how to do.
I know what it was. Would it be possible to find out from the county boards in the state that are? Well, I don't even know if we'd need to worry about them being similar to us or not, but the other county boards in the state that meet at an earlier time like we do, um, versus the ones that meet at five o'clock or whatever on the public participation that they have. You know, I, I don't know what our audience is at the county level. You know, and I wonder if we're trying to fill a slot where there isn't unreachable need. Um, and I would like to explore the call in for comments because you're right. It's a one-way conversation. And whether we have public comment at the first or at the end of the meeting. Um, so I think there's things that we can consider that are very incremental. Um, and then continue the discussion with the new board.
Philosophically, I, I, I think, you know, who is our audience? And I've always felt very strongly and it's up, and y'all may disagree and that would be perfectly fine. I've always viewed it, our, our, our customers as the parents of our direct service students. So Cortland Community Schools, Special Education, probably provide those and a whole bunch of, of, um, preschoolers coming up apparently. And how, how can we best serve them? You know, we serve everybody in the county. There's no doubt about that. But our, I, I've always viewed our core constituency as being those folks. And maybe that's a way to think about. How do we be open to them and reach them?
Michelle? I guess my perspective is a, is a little different because I mean, you're, we're really focused right now on public participation. But I'm about access regardless if there are people that are coming to our meetings or not. Like Bruce said, San Inez Valley, people weren't interested in going, there was no issues, but it, it's really issue driven. And if there is an issue, like for instance, with the special education team, there was an issue and then they had no access. So I think it's about just being available. It may not be convenient for board members, but it also is the other side of it is not just public access, but it's public service of people who want to serve on the board. They could be UCSB students. They could be, um, uh, you know, just people that have day jobs. And so I think the, I think we, oh, you know, the focus is just not on public participation. It's remember that. But Bruce makes a good point about, but you know, the new complexion of the board and it's up, it's going to be, I think, good. That's when we, you vote on schedule and I think that would be appropriate time as well.
I think it's interesting that although, um, none of the participants in the items that were brought forward about the special education issues, none of them were able to come to public hearing or public comment. And yet we all got their letters and read them and knew exactly what their complaints were. And we raised them to Susan about let's fix some of these things, you know, what can we do? So I, I think the avenue was there. You know, for them to do that. And they did get the recognition and the response to their complaints. So, um, there's lots of options and I agree. The discussion will definitely continue, but let's make some incremental adjustments if we can. Okay. All right. Um, and now discussion about conflict of interests related to SBCO administered nonprofit organizations. I need to, I want to provide a little background and context for this discussion. Um, a while back, a board member raised a question in regards to our superintendents. Raised a question to Susan and myself regarding our superintendent's position in regards to partners in education. And also the participation of our county board members in Partners in Education's Board. A legal opinion was requested from our legal department. And I think at this time, if Justin would like to share what the bottom line was on whether or not there was a conflict with our superintendent being the, um, chair of the PIE board and our board members being on the PIE board.
Yeah. So, um, we've looked at this before in other contexts for other school districts because you probably know a lot of school districts have support organizations or nonprofit, um, nonprofits that support them or, um, you know, fundraise for them to do different things like that. Um, when I think about conflicts, if there's kind of two big issues, there's, there's a lot of different laws involved and it gets a little bogged down, but there's really two issues. The way I see it, there's, is someone benefiting financially from their two positions in some way, or are the offices incompatible in some way? And so those looking at it from the, it, it, like I said, it gets complicated. These legal opinions, you can go, look them up at the Fair Political Practices Commission with the Attorney General and they're like 15 pages long. And, you know, they go through a multi-factor analysis. It's a little easier here because we know that the people who serve on the partners board are not paid. And I don't even know if they get per diem or travel reimbursement. It doesn't matter if they do, but I don't think they do. And so they're, they're not paid. And so there's no way for them to benefit financially from any kind of decision that would take place on the county board level. And so because of that, that kind of takes out the Political Reform Act, Government Code 1090, which has to do with approving contracts. Um, and really the, the common law conflict of interest stuff. And so it leaves you with, are these incompatible offices? And this is when you get into those opinions about whether someone can serve on this special district and this city council at the same time, or this county position and this city position, things like that. That's a pretty easy one here too, because you have to have two public offices. And we have one public office with the county board or the county superintendent. We don't have a second one though, because it is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. And so if you don't have two public offices, then the doctrine of incompatible offices, which is all in government code 1099, um, doesn't apply. And so when you look at it from that perspective, there, there really is no conflict issue here. Like I said, sometimes the legal analysis, if you get, go through all these like multi-factor things, you start talking about like, well, is there this kind of interest? Is there that? And, and they get a little complicated. And, um, if you want a written opinion, we can go through it and provide that for you. But um, based on our analysis, we, we don't see it as a, as a problem for you all. And this is a model that a lot of, a lot of districts certainly use. Um, I'm not familiar with other county offices, but I suspect they probably do too.
Questions or comments from the board? Michelle?
Uh, yes, I was the board member who requested this because I, I had some reservations about this and some of my constituents called me about this and they were concerned and, and two of them were attorneys within Santa Barbara County. And so, um, you know, Sam, our, our, our board oversees, as you know, from this beautiful program and 200 programs and three of them are nonprofits. And they are funded or partially funded with public money. So when you have, you have, um, not only partners in education, you have, um, health linkages and you have, um, children's creative project. And I said, I think that to ensure the highest standards, uh, in our governments, governments, I think it's crucial to be, maintain public trust and effective oversight. And basically we are oversight for these programs. Um, and I think we should ensure in transparency, fairness and accountability. And I believe we should establish, maybe our legal counsel is, you know, looking at just clear legal, um, uh, reasoning, but I think that just, we should establish some clear boundaries, um, between our elected officials. Um, between our elected officials. And to prevent a potential or perceived conflict of interest that may arise in serving dual roles. As uh, uh, serving on this, not on these nonprofit boards that SB CEO administers overseas and funds with the public money. And I don't, I have a, I just have a serious reservations about the historical um and current practice. Now, now, but just because it's historical, doesn't mean that it's. It could have evolved as maybe not proper. And also I just want to, I want to just assure everybody, I'm not accusing anybody of wrongdoing. Or doing anything, anything that's, you know, not above board. But I just think going forward and just the, 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 if this is appropriate. Um, when you're making decisions and I think our override, our, our oversight roles should be separated. I think because we have superintendent, uh, you know, our elected superintendent and elected county board members are making decisions. And the, about these programs, including this nonprofit, and we should have the utmost impartiality without divided loyalty. Free of bias and perceived um potential conflicts of interests. You could have, I mean, I could come up with a lot of examples of how this could happen and, you know, I don't know if you would like me to. To express these because it, say, Michelle de Word is a president of a nonprofit that I want SBCE to um oversee. And, and I want to bring a couple of board members also. I mean, what prevents us from doing this in the future? And I think it just, we need to establish just a clear separation. Um, because I think what happens if you have a donor at Partners of, of Education and they want to donate a bunch of mon- money to Santa Barbara Partners in Education. And, but they want you to tweak the mission. I think there's no transparency right now between our board members and Superintendent Salsito that we know what's going on with Partners in Education. Except for the, you know, the, the one year, one time a year, we know what's going on in the program, but we really don't have a. And I think all board members should be on board and knowing what Partners in Education is, is doing. It's if. You know, and why should just two board members and a superintendent know what's happening? So this, um, I think we just need to, um. You know, this, this practice dates back, but I think that. I think because we are funding this with public money and I think there might be some divided loyalties between. Your board members on a nonprofit and are you going to be, are you about? Santa Bar, oh, are you, are you serving SB CEO um their mission or are you serving Partners in Education and with the alliances that you have? On that board, it may not be a financial interest, but there's all these six degrees of separation that, that come to mind that. That, that gives a perception to constituents and, and in our community that it's, it's not appropriate. And so I wanted to have a discussion with the board and, and thinking if this is, if this is something that. We want to, you know, seek a written legal opinion and then I am not a lawyer. Um, but I would like to just have some clarification and know if, if this does come up because there are people that under, that. Are not okay with this and that we're protected and that, you know, this as a board. And do we want to um have some language of, you know, that comes from a legal opinion saying there is. Is there a perceived or potential hook of um conflict of interest with board members? Serving on dual roles of nonprofits that we oversee and we also approve budgets for.
I could. This um. I've been on the partners previously Santa Barbara Industry Education Council. Changed his name in two thousand. I've been on that board longer than I've been on this board. I think. There are people who may raise questions. I take that at face value. I think the thing with Partners in Education and Children's Creative Project, to the extent I know what they do. Both exist to leverage. The business community, the arts community, other to support. Students in education. I, a perfect example, it wasn't a setup, but Sally Kingston pointing out. Partners in Education, what is doing at Lompoc with thirty-four parents and educators who got. Training computers for families that. The mission and the performance of Partners in Education for the last twenty-five or thirty years is, is truly. Game changing. Fifteen thousand, I think, is the number of computers given out to families. I could go on and on. So it. If not, it is the opposite of incompatibility. It's the opposite of a conflict. It is, it serves. To leverage other resources besides what the county office has. Hundreds of thousands of private donations and grants from nonprofits. That can then go support programs for our students. I think I can't speak. Uh, is clearly about. Children's um creative project, but I, but I. We certainly have reports and we see all of these schoolchildren who are, who are given. Access to the arts, et cetera. So I think it's um. It certainly one can start connecting dots. I think it's. It's unnecessary and I can speak firsthand that I think I'm. Couldn't be more proud to be associated with Partners in Education, what it's been able to do. I know you're not accusing me or Mary Beth or Susan of anything. I think it's. Um, to the extent there are some that think it could be a conflict, there are literally thousands. Who will speak to the benefits that have been provided.
Uh, I too have served on the board of Partners in Education for longer than I've served on the county school board. Always been completely open about that. We do have conflict of interest forms that we file every year as we do here. Everything about partners is transparent and open. Everything about partners is about building partnerships. So having representation throughout the county serves to bolster the programs that are offered to students. Gives them additional opportunities. It is the absolute definition of a win-win. And then rather than a divided loyalty. I see it as sort of a, a superpower loyalty because you're really devoting your resources and. And time to furthering the educational experience and bringing in private sector resources as part of that. No one that sits on the board has any. Uh, ability to make a financial decision that would favor partners over county ed. Moreover, no one who sits on the board would be in a position to influence the use of public funds. Um, as far as reporting what's being done, website's great, it's interactive. Um, I feel. Such complete confidence with the fidelity and the dedication and the integrity of the members. Of the staff of partners and the fact that it is a board where. Every superintendent of schools serves. Every CEO of major industry is there as well. Founders, uh, I'm sorry, funders, um. I sit in a, in the capacity of a private citizen, but I also represent my foundation, more part of the president's council. It is a way to galvanize more support for public education in a way that isn't being done anywhere else. So I can't. By any stretch of the imagination, see a potential conflict. And I think it's interesting that your constituents. Would think that way uh in my whatever twenty years there. I've, I've never heard of anything to that. Um, I'm sure it's, it's a good exercise to raise every potential possibility for a conflict. Um, and it's probably. Um, maybe your preference to seek a legal opinion on any potential? Uh, but I, I don't know that beyond what Austin just offered us, there's any there, there. There's any, there's nowhere else to go with this. But I would welcome you, Michelle, to a miss, a meeting. So you could see exactly what happens and what transpires. The meetings are not every month. But they are really, really interesting and they dive into the programs for the students that we serve. In a way that really um, it's elucidating, it's illuminating and it's really inspiring. And I, I think you should probably think about attending and. Check it out. Yeah, that's all I'm gonna say.
Now, I didn't mean for this to be an attack on Partners in Education and the benefits. And I see how you have, you know. Just are very passionate about it and I think that nonprofits are, are, are great for us to be. Um, administering because they really are focused on certain things that just the county office can't do. So I believe in partnerships. With nonprofits, but I believe that. Board members should not be sitting on these boards of the nonprofits because we oversee these programs. We, we preside the oversight. So how do you oversee your program that you're sitting on the board with? And then we provide funding. We have an employee that we, um, that is also the executive director that Susan has to, is. She's responsible for the employment of that person. She's one vote on the nonprofit board, but she's in charge of that one person. And if there was a issue where they wanted to have a replacement, how does Susan go about? Replacing the executive director unless it's approved by the nonprofit. So I just think there's a lot of overlap. That could create conflicts in the future. And I'm not saying that there's a conflict now, but I just feel like it's, that there should be some. Very clean boundaries going forward and, and having this, this um. This oversight function that we have and the public money and we're, we're spending this public money that we should not be overseeing. Nonprofits where we're sitting on the boards of that.
I would just like to clarify that between the three nonprofits that the county is partners with. Every one of them does have a memorandum of understanding with the county and that those have been approved by the board. Before they were entered into that partnership. So. There's no situation that any nonprofit could come to the county. And try to establish some kind of relationship without the board. Knowing about the memorandum of understanding, reading it, agreeing with it and approving it. So what better way to have oversight over a partner? Than to be a part of their decision-making process when there's no financial interest involved. And when there is clearly a separation of duties between the two positions. So I hear loud and clear, Michelle, what you're saying. Uh, and I'm not saying that. There couldn't ever be a problem. Of course, there can always be a problem. I just don't see one right now. In this situation. And going forward. So any other board members? Mr. Bruce, I always look to you for a sounding clock.
I would like to hear what other board members would go on record and say, is this appropriate to you? How does this feel to you? If this isn't, if this feels, if I'm the only one that feels this way, that, that's fine, but I think it would be. Very interesting to, for me to understand where people are coming from. And I know it's probably new that you. When I first came on the board, I didn't know all these people were on Partners in Education, so it's been less than, than transparent. And when, you know, there are board meetings, there are no, we don't hear that there are board meetings that they attended or what happened. I mean, there, you know, we have an opportunity to have. Board reports. If I was sitting on that nonprofit, I would take advantage to be very transparent and. Show and talk about Partners in Education. So that was just my experience. So I, but I would love to hear. How other board members um feel about this, if they want a legal opinion or if they're, they're satisfied. With, with um what's been said today. Thank you.
I, I'm not, I'm sorry. I'm not satisfied with what's being said today. I'm listening to what's going on. So you're not going to get a commitment from me about any of this today. Because again, I've only been around here a little bit. It seems like it's a very, a very um important piece to you. I'm listening to that. I'm listening to all the work that's been going on and it has gone on too. So. In order for me to address this, I won't at this particular time. And I don't think it's anything I feel comfortable doing at this particular time. Uh, I will listen some more and I think it needs to be something that maybe. Continues to get addressed until we can figure out. Exactly what everything is, is boiling down to. Because I still, I still see an undercurrent here and I don't really know what it is quite yet. So I'm still trying to listen to everybody, but I will not make a decision or give you an opinion today.
Yeah, so I have heard about this from you before, just in a wondering mode as opposed to a, a, a board agenda piece. I, I think I've come down to not having a problem with it. If we had a majority of this board on the nonprofit, I would have a problem with that. I actually think after watching other forms of public partner, public, public partnerships. Um, I actually think this is actually a great technique. It's a, it's to our board's benefit, I think, SB CEO's mission to their benefit, I think. To have a couple of. Board members and Susan sort of. Giving the nonprofit guidance on how to best support our mission, which I think is what they want to do. So I think it's actually a pretty handy tool. Uh, in, in the same way that, well, just other public partner, um, public, private partnerships. Um, having said that. Philosophically, I think if any board member asks for a legal opinion uh on, on something. I think it's important for the whole board to, to, to support the board member and whether they agree or not. Somebody's asked for legal, we probably, probably should do it. I, I think the legal opinion is going to turn out to be just fine in, in my gut, just because I think it is certainly not a financial. Uh, conflict of interest. You know, perceived conflict of interest, there's always going to be those. I think for some people, this will be a perceived conflict of interest. But it, it certainly doesn't bother me. So that's where I stand.
Um, okay, well, I. There are a lot of moving parts to this discussion. Um, however, the, the items that raised to the top with, with my interpretation of. This topic is one, we did get um a legal interpretation of whether it's a conflict of interest and. Based on uh, the information that we received. Um, I think that it lays it out pretty clearly that it is, there is no conflict of interest if we. If there's a request to get additional legal counsel or legal interpretation on top of what we've already received. Uh, in my purely honest opinion, that feels a little superfluous. I feel, I, I, I do feel like maybe we can codify. The legal counsel that we did receive on this so that we have that for reference, for future reference, or if that. Hypothetical situation comes up in the future, we have that um ability to show them that this has been discussed and this is what we agreed upon. So. Um, you know, we have taken care of and closed that loop. And the only another thing that just comes to mind is I, I appreciate. Um, a lot of the topics that you bring up because it, it does invite discussion, it does invite. Um, all of the board members to be able to really think clearly on how they feel about certain topics. That said, sometimes it can feel like an attack. Because just because you would do something a certain way, doesn't mean that everyone else would do. That thing a certain way and to say like, well, if I was on the board, I would be giving this report back and it, it just. It, it, it feels like there's like, there's a lack of trust again. And I know that that's not maybe where you're coming from. I understand that. But just, I, you know, you ask the opinion of everyone. And so that is my opinion is just maybe um. What is the end goal? And maybe the end goal is I, I want to make sure that we codify. The, the legal counsel and I want to make sure that we have report backs to the board when. Um, board members and their super. Um, board members and their superintendent has these meetings so that we can have more clarification on what's going on. And then that, you know, then that serves the purpose. Um, but sometimes just. I think maybe looking at what that end purpose in mind is. Is maybe an, an important perspective with some of these things that are brought up so that it doesn't feel accusatory sometimes. Um, when you're bringing these types of stuff.
Well, I don't mean to sound accusatory. I, that was, I mean, that's why I preface, there was nobody, I wasn't accusing anybody of wrongdoing. I think this issue just needed to be raised and I believe because. Business people in the community have brought this up to me and I feel as important as a board that we are aware of it and we bring it to the surface. And talk about it. And, um, and, and we've got, we have a, you know, legal discussion about it. So now I think that we are protected because it's very, it's now out. You know, it's been disclosed and we can um, be aware of it going in the future and we could say we've talked about it as a board. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I wanted to say a few words, but wait till the board had had its discussion and I really appreciate it. And Michelle, I, you know, we've, we've had this dialogue going for a while and always you've been talking about. Just making sure that we're protected and we want to be aware, you're bringing awareness and not accusing. So I really appreciate that. And then I really appreciate that you brought it for, forward to the whole board so we can have a discussion, you can have a discussion. I wanted to just say a few things. Um, one is, um, I serve on the Partners Education Board. Um, I'm named as a, 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 the role is named on the MOU to participate. Along with the CEOs of many um, or organizations and universities. So I think it's really important that I. My role is at the same table at the, as the others in talking about the partnership. Having said that, um, Bridget Boblitz, as my designee is, serves on the other two nonprofits as well, so that she, we're staffing. The other two nonprofits here at SBCEO. No other county board members are on the other nonprofits, but. Um, I, I have, I have spoken with colleagues who in their nonprofit MOUs, they actually write in. County board members to serve on those boards. So um, a, a whole different spectrum could be. Shall we have county board members all serve on the nonprofit boards? But that isn't um, the, the, the discussion for today. One of the things I wanted to share is, you know, maybe um, it's not a tug of war of what. You know, what is a conflict, what is in a conflict, but perhaps I could he- help in the future. Um, share some clarity around the rules. Because it is a unique partnership to have or set up, you know, it's a, it's a unique situation or organizational structure. To have a, a organization as a county office administer nonprofits and they have a board. I mean, it is unique. Um, not, it's not singular, but it's not, you know, it's not that every county office operates this way, but some do. So perhaps in the future, it would be helpful just as informative to share what is the role in terms of just really nuts and bolts. Of my role and administering the program pieces. Since I have oversight over the employer, employees as well as the program. What is the executive director's role and their staff? And then what is the role of the board in this, in this way? Perhaps it's a question of clarity. Um, more than it is, you know. Are these specifically, you know, legal conflicts of interest? Because I think what I'm hearing from the board is, you know, it sounds. It sounds like um, there's some raised questions and wonderings. Um, it sounds like it feels in consideration for several feels okay. And in other cases, it feels really good, you know, and, and value added. Um, so I, I, I just wanted to say a state, my role, our staff role. Perhaps clarity could be helpful in the future. Um, and then, you know, pass it back to you, but I'm not, I'm not hearing any action that you're seeking today.
This was strictly a discussion to see what would surface and uh, appreciate your. Taking it all in and seeing opportunities for fine tuning things that. May be of interest to us. So I think that's a good place to leave it, if that's all right. I think this is the first time or one of the few times that we've had open discussions. Upon which there's no action that we're being asked to take. And I just want to thank each and every one of you. For your participation in these discussions. It's hard. It's, it's hard to have differences of opinion or differences in points of view and still. Play together and work together as a team. And I respect each and every one of you for your ability to do that today. So thank you very much. Future agenda items, so far we have artificial intelligence as it's used or. Will be or may not be used in education and a safety update from Dennis. Okay? And now I would entertain, oh.
We can ask for future items too, right?
Yes.
So because Steve Torres doesn't have enough to do. At, at, at some future board meeting, I would appreciate a, a very short discussion about. What are the things that cause school districts to lose tax money? So for example, Danger Mon result, or um, preserve. When it was uh, put into preserve status. Did that result in loss of property taxes to the, the affected school districts in, in the area? Uh, what happens when a tribe takes some of the property into, or the US takes property into trust on behalf of a tribe? Um, what, what happens to those property taxes in terms of schools? And what happens when the federal government takes property? Uh, for example, in the case of Vandenberg, when they first took it from ranchers in World War Two. What are the impacts on property taxes and their impacts on schools? And there may be others too, uh, Forest Service, et cetera. So I'm not looking for the, the fees that we get, for example, from the Forest Service, but really the property tax impact. And it does not have to be right away. Okay? So put that on the back burner, but I think it'd be interesting to the board and good for us tonight.
In your spare time. No, that is interesting point. That is a very interesting point. And it's not so much having an opinion of it as it is just knowing what it is now.
Brings it up is I'm, I'm here, sitting here thinking about danger on how great that is, but I'm thinking about Vista Del Mar almost going broke. Like, did they lose money from that? I don't know. But it, it's good for us to know.
Okay. Any other comments for future discussion? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All the second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, everyone.